Councilmember Ian Hugh of the Cactus District, Councilmember Joyce Clark of the Yucca District, Councilmember Ray Malner of the Swallow District, Councilmember Lauren Tomachoff of the Choya District, and Councilmember Bart Turner of the Beryl District. Thank you for joining our Glendale City Council meeting.
Okay, folks. Good evening. Welcome to Glendale City Council Workshop Session, June 28, 2022. Meeting is called to order. If everyone have their seats, please. Roll call is not necessary. Everybody is in attendance. If you'd take note, please. The next two items on our agenda tonight is going to be our invocation, and that's going to be delivered by Pastor Bill Davenport of Calvary Church. Following Pastor Davenport, if everyone will please remain standing, we'll do the invocation. So Pastor Davenport, if you would, sir?
Thank you. Good evening. Will you please bow your heads with me? Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you this hour asking for your help and blessing as we gather here together to be of service. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you clearly show us how to conduct our work with joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find new ways to excel in our work. And lastly, we pray for the city of Glendale. We ask for your favor and protection on all of its citizens of this great city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, next is the approval of the minutes. It's a consideration of the minutes from the June 14, 2022 voting meeting. Councilmembers, do you have any corrections or additions to that? Hearing none? Can I get a motion to approve June 14, 2022 voting meeting minutes? Anybody?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion to approve a second from Councilmember Hugh. Any discussion on that? I'll wait till they're done. Approve what? Okay, no discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Here's, I do have what that motion carries. We have no proclamations today, so we're going to move on to boards, commissions, and other bodies. Ms. Bauer, would you read item number two, please?
Approve recommended appointments to boards, commissions, and other bodies.
Do we have any speaker cards?
No, sir.
I'm so used to you over here, and then I have to go over here. Okay. Councilmember Turner?
Mayor.
Any nominations?
Mayor, I move to appoint Lisa Baker, Kelly Carbello, and Leslie Mele to the Community Development Advisory Committee for terms expiring on June 30 of 2024.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Here's, I do have what that motion carries. Are any of those members here tonight? Okay, Ms. Bauer, we'll let you swear them in at another time. Moving on to our consent agenda, items three through 23, items on the consent agenda. Of a routine nature, they've been previously studied by this council at a workshop session. They are intended to be acted upon in one motion by this council. Have we any speaker card on any of these items?
No, sir.
Okay, it's my understanding, Councilmember Tomachoff, would like a separate vote on item 19. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items Three Through Eighteen and Twenty Through Twenty-Three?
Yes, Mayor, I move we approve Consent Agenda Items Three Through Eighteen and Twenty Through Twenty-Three.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, Councilmember Tomachoff, second, Councilmember Clark, to approve Consent Agenda Items Three Through Eighteen, Twenty Through Twenty-Three. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Here's, I do have what that motion carries. Moving on to item number 19. Ms. Bauer, could you introduce that, please?
Authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Entellus, Inc. for design services for the 91 Cardinals Development Project.
Mayor, members of council, here to provide staff report and answer any questions council may have is Don Besler, our Director of Engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Mayor, members of council. Councilmember Tomachoff, you might have questions about the background. So the background on this is, as you recall, this is the Black Lot Project. It's been called 91 Cardinals. It's now coming forward with a new branding name. There's been a number of agreements that have come before the council prior to this time. This is a professional services agreement with Entellus to do the engineering design. If you recall, you had asked that at some point you wanted, early on in the design process, that the council wanted to see a report back to the council with imaging, visioning, and some good amount of preliminary engineering done so that we know what costs looked like for extending infrastructure, utilities, and so forth, and the developability of the lot. That's what this effort will do. It'll take it to what we call an engineering design concept report, which is roughly a 15% schematic design. At the end of that, we would then intend to come back to the council and report back.
I don't have any questions, Mayor. I just, we've had a series of agreements so far with this, I guess, exploratory exercise, I would call it, and we are now, with the approval of this agreement, adopting this agreement at about $445,000. I've talked to a couple of developers, and because I'm not, obviously, I'm not a developer, but that this, these are things that a developer would be doing. Naming a project, doing this offsites work, and doing offsites work when you don't really know what the vision of the project work, I've been told that there has to be some sort of vision before you do this type of work. So I feel like, I mean, this has been in the works for quite some time, that it's pretty much kind of set. I just don't think the city government should be competing with private development, competing with private investment. I think we're out of our lane here acting as a developer. So I'm going to be voting no on this, but that's the reason I polled it. Thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve item 19?
Mayor, I move we approve item 19.
Second.
I have a motion, Councilmember Clark, a second from the Vice Mayor to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Unbeknownst to me, I had pretty much the same considerations about this as Councilmember Tomachoff just expressed. I just, I can't fathom that we're spending, should this pass, which I hope it doesn't, you know, we're close to half a million dollars into a site we intend to sell and give to the private sector, and I just can't believe that we're putting this much taxpayer money into it when it really is a market function. I listened to the workshop conversation from earlier today, and I think a number of councilmembers made the point that this is a function of the market. This is not our role, certainly isn't, I don't think, our taxpayers' role. It's just gotten way overboard, and I will be voting no as well.
Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Malner, how do you vote?
I'd like to explain my vote.
Go ahead.
You know, I disagree with the comments that have been made. I don't see us being a developer. I don't see the city. We're not a developer. We're not making, we're not developing this product, project. We are providing some internal processes that make it more attractive for developers to want to come in and do something with this property. We've decided as a council, we voted that we wanted to move forward on, or at least discuss that we wanted to move forward on marketing this property and making it a benefit for the city and its citizens. And I think this is just one of the many different processes that we could use. It's not maybe the absolute best, but I think it is a process that will be beneficial, I think it's going to be fruitful, and I think we're going to get a great product, and I think we're going to benefit the citizens significantly with the revenue that will be generated from this project. So with that, I vote aye, and I disagree with the sentiment that we shouldn't be involved in this. As a city, this is our property, and we should do everything we can to maximize the benefit to the public by getting the maximum revenue that we can out of this property.
Thank you. Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Explain my vote. I've yet to see any evidence or data that any of this that we're doing maximizes or improves the value of that property in the least. In fact, it has put us into perhaps even a different, less desirable market than when the council first considered putting this up for sale. If it walks like a duck and it talks like a duck, it's a duck. The things that we are doing are the things that a developer would do once they bought a piece of land. We're in the business of zoning. We, it is zoned. The previous council zoned it. If we're not satisfied with the zoning, then we should reconsider the zoning. It's a PAD. We have that ability, particularly while we still own it. But as far as developing CCNRs and naming rights and all of this other stuff, that's not our role. It's not the role of government. Somebody who, somebody in this room once said when they first came on board here that the city shouldn't be, you know, in the real estate business. We're not, you know, we're not developers, and that's right. We're not. And I just think we should quit doing it. Either market this property and find out what it's worth or no.
And with that, you?
Vote no.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Consent Resolutions. My understanding, the city manager has requested that we amend item 34 and vote on it separately. First, we'll vote on the Consent Resolutions. Ms. Bauer, can you read Consent Resolutions, item 24 through 33 and 35 by number and title?
Item 24, Resolution Number R 22-57, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with Tulson Union High School District Number 214 for a school resource officer at Copper Canyon High School during the 2022-23 school year. Item 25, Resolution Number R 22-58, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the Glendale Union High School District for a school resource officer at Apollo High School, Glendale High School, and Independence High School during the 2022-23 school year. Item 26, Resolution Number R 22-59, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the city manager or his designate to apply for an FAA Airport Improvement Program grant up to the amount of $1,679,752 for the rehabilitation of Taxway A at the Glendale Municipal Airport to sign all certifications required for the grants to enter agreements with U.S. Department of Transportation for the purpose of accepting state money and to amend existing grant agreements if necessary to accept these grants and to authorize staff to accept and expend all funds and to make these authorizations effective until October 15, 2022. Item 27, Resolution Number R 22-60, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement 133-75-2022 Transit Services with the Regional Public Transportation Authority for the provision of public transportation services in the city of Glendale. Item 28, Resolution Number R 22-61, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a development agreement regarding zoning infrastructure, city services, and city fees for GV Echo Owner LLC, a Delaware limited liability company. Item 29, Resolution Number R 22-62, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the Alhambra School District Number 68 for a consent agreement for voluntary access. Item 30, Resolution Number R 22-63, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the Town of Queen Creek for the use of the tax application for access and the ability to interact with statewide tax data provided by the Department of Revenue. Item 31, Resolution Number R 22-64, resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Flagstaff for the use of the tax application for access and the ability to interact with statewide tax data provided by the Department of Revenue. Item 32, Resolution Number R 22-65, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Eloy for the use of the tax application for access and the ability to interact with statewide tax data provided by the Department of Revenue. Item 33, Resolution Number R 22-66, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, adopting the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Pension Funding Policy and formally accepting the employer's share of the assets and liabilities under the system based on the system's actuarial valuation report. Item 35, Resolution Number R 22-68, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of Amendment Number Two of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Phoenix for the operation of fixed route transit services in the city of Glendale. That concludes the Consent Resolutions.
Do you have any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve items 24 through 33 and also item 35 on Consent Resolutions Agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I move we approve items 24 through 33 and item 35.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, second from Councilmember Tomachoff. To approve items 24 through 33 and also 35 on Consent Resolutions Agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Here's, I do have what that motion carries unanimous. Item number 34, Ms. Bauer, would you introduce that, please?
Resolution Number R 22-67, a resolution, City of Glendale, Arizona, Mayor and Common Council designating the Chief Fiscal Officer for officially submitting the fiscal year 2022 Expenditure Limitation Report to the Arizona Audit General.
Mayor, members of the council, item number 34 of this resolution is required by the state law for each city in town to name the individual who is authorized as the Chief Financial Officer designated to sign and submit the city's annual expenditure limitation report. The resolution currently names Lizette Camacho, the city's Budget and Finance Director, as that person. However, we were informed today that Lizette will be leaving the city at the end of July to accept a position as Finance Director for the city of Tempe. Rather than bring the item back, staff is requesting council amend the resolution tonight to name Vicky Rios as the Chief Financial Officer and the person authorized to sign the report. Staff prepared an amendment for council consideration. It's my understanding, it's on each of your desk if you have any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Okay, can I get a motion to approve item 34 as amended per staff's recommendation?
Mayor, I make a motion that we first amend Resolution Number R 22-67 as follows. Strike all references to Lizette Camacho and replace with Vicky Rios.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this item, on this motion? Hearing none? Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Malner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
I'm going to explain my vote. Ms. Camacho, I don't even know where you're in the audience, but I'll get way in the back. We're going to miss you. I wish you weren't leaving, but it is what it is, and we wish you the very, very best. With that, I'm going to vote yes.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I now make a motion that we approve Resolution Number R 22-67 as has been amended.
Second.
Okay, so you've heard the motion, Councilmember Clark, seconded by Councilmember Tomachoff. Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Malner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Bids and contracts. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 36, please?
Board of Invitation for Bid IFB 2023-34 and Authorization to Enter Into an Agreement with Calmat Company Doing Business as Vulcan Materials Company for Road Materials. No speaker cards.
No speaker cards. Any questions from the council? Can I get a motion to approve item 36?
Yes, Mayor, I move we approve item 36 with Vulcan Materials.
Second.
Okay, we have a
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Hugh, second from Councilmember Tomachoff, for the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Mayor, I will explain my vote on this item and the following three items, all under bids and contracts. They are all five-year contracts for what I would consider ordinary and usual services, so I will be voting no on all of them, and my recorded vote is nay.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Malner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion does carry. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 37?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Staffing Specialist NV LLC for temporary staffing services. No speaker cards.
Okay, we're getting a presentation? No? Okay, any questions from the council? Hearing none? Can I get a motion to approve item 37?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item number 37.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, second from Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this one? Hearing none? Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Malner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion also carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 38?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Utility Construction Company, Inc. for electrical and lighting products, EV charging stations, and electrical services. No speaker cards.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none? Motion to approve?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Well, you take it for granted that it's a motion to approve. It could be otherwise, but it is. Mayor, I move that we authorize the city manager to enter into the described linking agreement with Utility Construction Company, Inc.
Second.
I have a motion to approve, Councilmember Turner, second from Councilmember Hugh, approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this vote? Hearing none? Roll call. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Malner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion also carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 39?
Authorization to enter into Amendment Number One to the linking agreement with Origami Risk LLC for risk management information system software and to ratify expenses. There are no speaker cards.
No presentation? Okay, councilmembers, do you have any questions? Hearing none? Can I get a motion to approve on item 39?
Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Malner.
I move that we approve item number 39.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Malner, second from Councilmember Tomachoff, approve the recommended action. We have any discussion on this item? Hearing none? Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Malner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries. Land Development Actions. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 40, please?
Ordinance Number O 22-41, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, State of Arizona, pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 9-471, Arizona Revised Statutes and its amendments by annexing certain territory located south of Glendale Avenue and west of the 115th Avenue alignment consisting of approximately .1675 acres to be known as Annexation Area Number 236, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance be recorded.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report this evening is Glendale Planning Manager Tabitha Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor and council. This request before you is asking council for adoption of the annexation for city-owned property to be located within property to be located within the city limits. The property is approximately .2 acres in size. It is located south of Glendale Avenue and west of 115th Avenue alignment. The property is within the county right now. If council adopts this annexation this evening, it would take on the most light compatible zoning, which would be R16. Here is the annexation map, just to show surrounding properties that are within the city limits, and this is just a process to have the additional city property within our jurisdiction. With that, Mayor and council, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Perry? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item 40?
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve item 40, ordinance 22-41.
Second. I have a motion, Councilmember Hugh, second, from the Vice Mayor to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries unanimous. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 41, please?
Ordinance number O-22-42, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, state of Arizona, pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 9-471, Arizona Revised Statutes and its amendments by annexing certain territory located south of Glendale Avenue and west of the 115th Avenue alignment, consisting of approximately .9270 acres, to be known as Annexation Area Number 238, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance be recorded.
Mayor, Mayor and council, similar to the previous action you just took, this is city-owned property, where we're requesting that council adopts the annexation for city-owned property to be located within the city limits. The property is approximately just shy of one acre, located south of Glendale Avenue and west of 115th Avenue alignment. It is within the county, and upon the annexation, the light zoning in this particular case would be SR30. Here is the annexation map depicting the location of the property in question for annexation adoption. Once again, it is surrounding other city property that is within the city limits. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, any questions? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item 41?
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance number O-22-42.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, seconded by Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries unanimously. Ms. Bauer, could you introduce, or would you introduce, item 42, please?
Ordinance number O-22-43, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, state of Arizona, pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 9-471, Arizona Revised Statutes and its amendments by annexing certain territory located south and west of the intersection of Bethany Home Road and Litchfield Road, consisting of approximately 4.38 acres, to be known as Annexation Area Number 237, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance be recorded.
Mayor and council, once again, this is the annexation adoption, request for a city to be located within the city limits of Glendale. The property is approximately 4.9 acres in size, and it's located south and west of the southwest corner of Bethany Home Road and Litchfield Road. The property is currently in the county with zoning classification that allows for residential development. Once again, upon the adoption of the annexation, the city will apply the most compatible light zoning, and in this particular case, it would be A1 agricultural. We also have further on the agenda is a proposal to rezone the property to PAD as part of a larger project endeavor. Here's the annexation map. The site is somewhat unique, and the fact that it's somewhat considered like a donut in the middle of other property that is already within the city limits. Now with that, Mayor and council, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve?
Yes, Mayor, I move we pass and adopt ordinance number 22-43.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, seconded from the Vice Mayor to approve the recommended action. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion also carries unanimous. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 43 for us, please?
Ordinance number O-22-44, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, rezoning 84.59 acres located north and west of the intersection of west Bethany Home Road and north Litchfield Road from M1 Light Industrial to PAD planned area development for a development plan entitled "The Base Industrial Park North PAD," amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance be recorded.
Okay, public hearing is now open on item number 43, ordinance 022-44.
Mayor and council members, once again, this is a request to rezone the subject property, which is approximately 85 acres in size, from M1, which is the light industrial, to the PAD planned area development. Here's the vicinity map. The subject property is approximately 800 feet north of the northwest corner of Litchfield Road and Bethany Home Road, which is approximately 10 miles from City Hall. Here's an area map, just to give some context to the location of the property and surrounding developments. To the east is residential, to the south is storage, and then to the west and to the north is property that is owned by the state's government. Here's the general plan. The general plan depicts land use destination for light industrial and Luke compatible land uses. The current zoning is M1, and the applicant is proposing for that PAD planned area development to allow for some commercial and industrial land uses. The Luke Air Force Base has reviewed the application, and they do not have any oppositions to the proposal before you. Here is a depiction of the north PAD for context. The area that is encircled is Bethany Home intersection, and that is part of a requirement based on the traffic study for a traffic signal, which is part of the application that is next on the agenda. Here is a conceptual site plan, proposing approximately 1.2 million square feet of development. This is just conceptual. It may be developed as depicted, or it may be developed differently as it relates to the number of buildings that you see before you. The circular motions on the exhibit depicts where access points would be for the proposed The most important part of the PAD is the applicant asked for some deviations in the development standards, one of them being for an increase in the building height, where M1 zoning classification allows for a maximum height of 30 feet. The applicant is proposing 56 feet maximum height. And then also in the zoning ordinance for M1, we basic on the floor area ratio, and to make it more simpler for developers and for the city staff, the applicant within the PAD is proposing increase for a lot coverage, which will allow for 45%. The next one is to eliminate a screen wall requirement along the north and west boundaries adjacent to Luke Air Force Base. That was a request by Luke, just to protect the clear zone, and the applicant most willingly agreed to that. And number four is to eliminate the 10-foot landscaper buffer along the north and west boundaries for the same reason, to protect the clear zone, but that does not mean that the development will not include landscaping on the property. There will be adequate landscaping. The application was heard before planning commission on May the 26th. Planning commission gave a recommendation for approval. The applicant did comply with the city's citizen participation outreach process. There are some general concerns as it relates to truck traffic, based on the property to the east and the residential. And as we continue to go through the design review process, staff will work with the applicant to address those levels of concerns, but mostly it does not seem feasible for a truck to want to head east into the residential developments. Staff findings is that the proposal for the rezoning is consistent with the general plan. The proposal does allows for mixed uses of land uses, which meets the intent and the purpose of the PAD, and also that it would give an opportunity to develop an underutilized property. The analysis of it is adequate level of service associated with the access points, and that is part of the traffic study that was submitted by the applicant, provides dedications and traffic improvements, and it supports the Luke Air Force Base clear zone. And with that, Mayor and council, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Just for the audience, we all have small TV screens up here in front of us, and they're closed captioned. And as she was talking, when she said that Luke had requested a wall for a clear zone, the closed caption said "close on." So, I guess we want "close on," right? Okay, any questions? Seeing none. Can I get a motion?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item number 44.
Whoa, 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 timeout, 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 I'm too fast here. Public hearing is now closed. Now can I get a motion?
Mayor, motion to approve item number 4402-44.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second from Councilmember Clark. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Let me figure out if I just got ahead of myself here. Okay, Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Can I get a motion on item number 43, ordinance 022-44?
We just...
We just did it, okay. Well, he's got bumped out of order.
A point of clarification. I believe the motion was for item number 43, but was cited number 44. And I want to make sure that we did that correctly.
That is correct. Mayor, if I may make a correction, I wrote down 44. Motion to approve item number 43, ordinance number 022-44.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna take a revote on this, just, just to clear everything up. So, okay, so, Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion does carry. Okay. And I thought I messed that one up.
I did, I wrote 44.
Item 44. Ms. Bauer?
Ordinance number O-22-45, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, rezoning 60.7 acres located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Bethany Home Road and Litchfield Road from M1 Light Industrial to PAD planned area development for a development plan entitled "The Base Industrial Park South PAD," amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance be recorded.
Okay, public hearing is now open on item number 44, ordinance 022-45.
Mayor and council, previous on the agenda, council just approved the adoption of the annexation, which was for the WICWAM annexation, and based on council approval of that, the presentation for the rezoning needed to reflect that with the current light zoning being A1 for that portion that was just annexed into the city. Before you and your dais, it's an updated version of the ordinance that reflects from being, the original copy showed the rezoning request being from M1 to PAD. The revised newer version that is before you basically just states that the request is to rezone from A1 and M1 to PAD, just for clarification. So, the property, once again, is to rezonate from the A1 agricultural and the M1 light industrial to a planned area development. The subject property is approximately 61 acres in size. Here's the vicinity map. The property is located southwest corner of Litchfield and Bethany Home Roads, which is roughly about 10 miles away from City Hall. Here's an area map, just to give you context to where the property is in comparison to other developments. As you can see in the hatched area, the area that's outlined in pink is the area that council just adopted the annexation on. The general plan, land use designation is for light industrial, and the current zoning being the M1, and the proposal to PAD is consistent with the general plan for the light industrial. Here is the exhibit outlining of where the south PAD is located, as previously shared that the circular area is just to depict where the traffic signal will be required for the development. Conceptual site plan, once again, for this particular PAD is estimate that the development could develop up to 781,000 square feet of development. Once again, the changes within the PAD reflects the development standards within our current zoning ordinance for M1. The increase in building heights would go from 30 feet to 56 feet. The lot coverage that's being proposed is 45%. The elimination of the screen wall as required along the west boundary is the applicant in good faith working with Luke to protect their clear zone. And then also to eliminate the 10-foot landscaping buffer along the west boundary, but once again, the property will have landscaping. Staff finding is the proposal for the rezoning is consistent with the general plan. The proposal is incorporating a mixture of land uses from commercial and light industrial. It gives an opportunity to develop the site. Adequate levels of services associated with the access points. It provides the dedications and traffic improvements that are necessary for the development, and once again, it supports Luke Air Force Base clear zone. The application was heard before planning commission on May the 26th. There were two individuals that spoke in regards to the proposal, the concerns, once again, was relative to the residents to the east, as well as a concern with the church to the, I think it's to the south, addressing some of the concerns they have or had. The applicant did communicate with Turning Leaf Church to address their concerns. So, there has been communication between the applicant, the community to the east, as well as to Turning Leaf Church. With that, the request is for council to approve the rezoning applications with the stipulations that was identified in the staff report. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Ms. Perry, I think it's important that we talk about the stipulations on this particular amendment or land action. And the first one, the first stipulation, development shall be in substantial conformance. That's typical for any land action, is it not?
Mayor and councilwoman Clark, that is correct.
All right. Number two, three, four, and five are specific to this particular parcel, and I think they're worthy of note because there have been concerns by the church and by the residential properties to the east, and this might help allay some of their concerns with the identification of the stipulations. Stipulation number two is dedication of an additional 10 feet of right-of-way along Litchfield Road and installation of related half-street improvements. Where does that 10 feet of right-of-way abut?
That 10 feet, Mayor, councilwoman Clark, that 10 feet abut right along Litchfield Road?
It will abut the property owner, the developer's property, correct?
Yes, they will give the dedication of the 10 feet of right-of-way, yes.
Along the property owner's property.
Mayor and councilwoman Clark, that is correct.
All right. Number three, construction of right-turn deceleration lanes on Litchfield Road adjacent to Stella and Claremont intersections per city standards. Was this at the request of any particular group, the residential group or the church group?
Mayor, councilwoman Clark, it was part of the staff analysis with the Transportation Department and the traffic impact study.
Very good. Number four, review and approval of traffic study by the Maricopa County Department of Transportation prior to design review approvals. I would take this to mean that there could be some changes to the traffic pattern abutting the property if the county Department of Transportation signifies that it might be necessary. Would this be correct?
Mayor, councilwoman Clark, that would be correct.
All right. And lastly, number five, developer to provide 50% of the cost of the signal, design, and construction at the Bethany Home Road and Litchfield Road intersection. That is also in an attempt to slow down traffic in the area, correct?
Mayor, councilwoman Clark, that is correct. Based on the traffic study, it indicated that there were a need for a traffic signal for the very purpose that you just stated.
So, to date, the city and the developer have worked in good faith, and, and when you say that, because I talked to the attorney representing the developer just this morning, and she indicated that they have been working with the leadership of the Turning Leaf Church, and at this point, they believe they have resolved the issues identified by the leadership of the church. Is that correct?
Mayor, councilwoman Clark, to the best of my understanding, the applicant and their team, as well as city staff, has diligently worked with all parties to satisfy the concerns of the citizens, as like so from the planning commission public hearing meeting, our understanding from the applicant and documentation that they have been working with the church, and to the best of their understanding, yes, they have resolved their concerns.
And, and I think it might be beneficial to indicate that while the applicant has been working with church leadership, it is not clear that church leadership has conveyed some of the solutions that have been arrived at necessarily with the parishioners, and there may be some discommunication going on, and they may not realize that the leadership of their church is working in their best interest. So, I think that's important to point out as well. Thank you, Ms. Perry. Those are all the questions that I have for you.
All right, any other questions from council? Okay, I do have a gentleman here, and everything that you just questioned, I guess we'll find out whether that's fact or not. Matthew Garlic from Turning Leaf Church. Sure, if you would, state your name, the city that you live in. You have an address here that I, I'm questioning, 5800 North Litchfield Road. I think that's County Island or Litchfield Park?
Actually, it's Litchfield Park, Mayor.
Okay, I figured it was one of you, but you put Glendale, so that's why I was questioning.
We did try to be in Glendale, but...
Didn't try hard enough.
We didn't hard enough. We weren't apparently up there.
Okay, you do show here that you're in opposition, so I do question the statements just made with what you have to say.
Yep, so, to begin, good afternoon, Mayor Wires, Vice Mayor Aldama, and council members. My name is Matthew Garlic, for the record. I live at 948 West Grove Street in Litchfield Park, Arizona. I am here on behalf of Turning Leaf Church, as our senior pastor is doing missionary work in Europe. So, they have advised and asked me to come today on this wonderful afternoon in Arizona. As you have stated, the church is very thankful for the work that is continuing to be done through this process. We wish our neighbors, as we are a new resident there, we've been trying to put a church in for 15 years, and we accomplished that three months ago, and we're looking at new neighbors building around us, and we really appreciate the help you've given us so far tonight. But our opposition still exists, and it's clear. The opposition that we're talking about, Ms. Tabitha Perry actually brought it up, and if you went in mind, I don't know where Ms. Perry went, but you had a vicinity map. If I can show you and just discuss a little bit our position where the church is. In your... In your May 26th Planning Commission meeting, three of your Glendale commissioners, very, very excellent commissioners on planning, brought up the fact that they wanted to be a good neighbor. And I think we've started that process. I don't think we're there just yet. And so the opposition that we have, while we are working with the developer to be a good neighbor and welcoming everybody, if you turn around and you look at that, when you do the 300-foot notification zone, what happens in this particular case is most of the people that are being noticed for the south portion are either light industrial or commercial facilities. But if you look up there on that 300-foot north of our property, what you'll see is a lot of vacant land and very few homes. There were only a couple of homes within Dreaming Summit. Our issue at hand is the community across the street, Dreaming Summit, which we serve, everybody within that area, is the proper. Now, I know we went through proper planning that you had to do, and I get that. But I think Ms. Tabitha Perry also announced that this location not only is a donut, it's a very, very particular case. It's 10 miles from the city of Glendale. So way out there sits this piece, which you have all the authority to manage and decide what's going to happen, and we have no issue with that. But what we're concerned about is the residents across the street are unaware, because they're not looking at Glendale stuff, because they don't live in Glendale, and Glendale's to the east and they're to the west. Why would Glendale have this piece, which they do, and that's fine? But we believe those residents really don't know what's going to happen, and it's fundamentally going to really change, we believe, going from an M1, which we all agreed to when we bought the properties, everybody's aware of, to this, sorry, I'm going over time, to this significantly more traffic flow. As you're aware, the city of Litchfield Park was an opposition to it. You also may be aware, and we found out 48 hours ago, that there's now some traffic, semi-no-traffic zone along Camarack, is my understanding, between Litchfield Road to the south. So the traffic study that we saw initially highlighted over 60% of that traffic to go south, which that semi-traffic, if coming out of that development, our understanding, could no longer go that direction. So I don't know where the traffic study is, is it going to be redone? But it's really for the residents in the area was our concern. We do appreciate your time and effort and to continue to work with this. I've heard a lot of near accidents on Bethany Home. I'm excited to see that you've got a light going in there. We just would ask that maybe in this case on the south side, is there a week we can slow this down just enough where we can just make sure the community across the street, who's going to be greatly impacted, is on board? Other than that, that's my only comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Can I have a motion on item 44, ordinance 022-45?
Yes, Mayor. I move that we pass and adopt ordinance number 022-45.
Second.
I have motion, Councilmember Clark, second, and the Vice Mayor, approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, I would just like to make the comment that I did verify that there are multiple homeowners associations within Dreaming Summit, and they have been engaged with the zoning attorneys. So, and I would imagine that the HOA made sure that their residents were aware. And unfortunately, no matter probably what we do, the residents in Dreaming Summit are not going to be excited about this development. But I just wanted to make sure that I did just confirm that the HOAs were engaged and they were notified, which means that the residents should be well aware of what was happening. So, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
I'm going to explain my vote. There was a statement made that the city of Glendale is 10 miles away. That's not accurate. City Hall is 10 miles away. Luke Air Force Base is in the city of Glendale, and that's undeniably close to this project. So nobody likes growth, especially when it's coming around you. Anybody that lived here for the last 40, 50 years knows that. I've lived through it myself. I kind of wish things were the way they were, but being realistic, we have growth and we're experiencing it, and it's putting a lot of people to work, and it's helping our cities. So with that, I do vote aye. I'm hoping some of the issues talked about can get resolved. With that, we have a... Item number 45 has been removed from the agenda. Okay, moving on to item 46. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce?
A public hearing of the council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, regarding the adoption of the Transportation Infrastructure Improvement Plan and Land Use Assumptions.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report this evening is our Director of Engineering, Don Bessler.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Mayor, council member. Just, we don't have a formal presentation for you tonight, just provide some context for the viewers. Infrastructure Improvement Plan and Land Use Assumptions and Development Impact Fees are highly legislated by the state of Arizona. Different municipalities have different policy level plans in place in order to ensure, or not ensure, but Glendale certainly ensures that growth pays its proportional fair share of the infrastructure extensions that are necessary or infrastructure upgrades that are necessary to serve new growth. Yes, Mayor?
Hold on one second. Public hearing is now open. Keep on.
I'm going to just keep going from there, if that's okay. And so make sure that growth pays its proportional fair share of the infrastructure that's necessary. And that's important because we want to make sure that the costs are assigned properly. But it's also important to make sure that the level of service that broadly is assigned to that infrastructure system broadly, maybe not a pinpoint area, that the service level doesn't be diminished by growth over time. So you add capacity. In this instance, as you know, the New Frontier area in West Glendale has seen exceptional amounts of growth. The street system prior to the 2019 adoption of the city Development Impact Fee program that the council adopted, west of 115th, we decided to wait and see how growth patterns started to arrive over time. We have a very good handle on that. We gave you a workshop or a presentation at your March 27th, 22nd, excuse me, workshop. We laid out the methodology, the use assumptions, and the impact, a draft impact fee structure. Glendale sits about at the middle of that. This moves us up toward into the upper third, I would say, to our valley cities and by comparison. So again, this is a public hearing to make sure that we follow the legislative process. It's very linear. It's about a 275-day process. This is the first public hearing that you would host prior to having to consider adopting formally the Land Use Assumptions and Infrastructure Improvement Plan. You'll see that in August, and then there's an additional lengthy process about the fees themselves. With that, I'll stop talking and let the mayor preside.
Any questions from the council? I have no speaker card?
No speaker.
Anyone in the audience needing to speak on this item? Okay, public hearing is now closed. There was no action on that, that was just a public hearing, okay. Moving on to ordinances, Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 47, ordinance 022-47?
Ordinance number O22-47, in ordinance of the council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing cash and appropriation balance transfers between budget items in the adopted fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report this evening is Lizette Camacho, our Budget and Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This item is to adopt an ordinance approving fiscal year 2022 budget amendments. Exhibit A contains the requested cash and appropriation transfers between departments' funds. The transfers are consistent with the city's cash and budget appropriation transfer policy, and the city's fiscal year 2022 total budget appropriation across all funds remain unchanged with this action. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I, thank you, Ms. Camacho. So the funds that are being transferred from street bonds to fleet operating for increasing cost of fuel and for increasing cost of vehicle parts, right? Those are two, I line number three and four. Are those, just, what is the rationale for using, are those bonds that are, the authorities expiring, or why are we using street bonds for that?
Mayor, members of the council, the transfer is for the budget appropriation only, and so it doesn't impact the capacity or the voter authorization for the street bonds. For fiscal year 2023, if there is carryover or unspent appropriation for specific projects funded by street bonds, that will be carried over to fiscal year 23, so it won't impact the bonds themselves.
Okay, Mayor, if I could ask another question? So I just, so I thought, I just wasn't aware that street bonds could be used for fuel and parts. I was under the impression they were for capital use only. Go ahead.
Mayor, members of the council, we're not using the street bonds themselves to pay for fuel, we're just using the budget appropriation. It's appropriation that streets didn't use this year. It's just budget authority. It's not actual bonds, it's not actual cash money, it is just budget appropriation.
Mayor, so could it be carried over for pavement management? Could it be carried over for other projects within streets? And, you know, fund money could be used for this? Or, I'm just trying to understand the mechanics of what we're doing, that's all.
Mayor, members of the council, the money will come from whomever needs the money for their fuel. So if it's an enterprise fund that's charging fuel or a, or a general fund, fund that's charging for fuel, they will pay the actual bills. This is just budget. It's just a budget transfer of excess appropriation. And as Ms. Camacho said, when we do the carryover adjustments in fiscal year 23, those projects that, where the money did not get spent this year, they'll be made whole next year.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Mayor? Go ahead. Ms. Camacho, Ms. Rios, just to be clear, we won't be using bond money for operating expenses such as fuel?
Mayor, members of the council, no.
No, we won't be using bond money.
No, we will not be using bond money for operations. That would not be appropriate.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on item 47, ordinance 022-47? Yes, Mayor. I move where you approve item 47, ordinance 2247.
Second.
I have motion, Councilmember Hugh, a second, and Councilmember Tomachoff, approve the recommended action. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries unanimous. Moving on to item 48, ordinance 022-48.
Ordinance number O22-48, in ordinance of the council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, levying upon the assessed valuation of the property within the city of Glendale, subject to taxation, a certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget, less the amount estimated to be received from other sources of revenue, providing funds for various bond redemptions for the purpose of paying interest upon bonded indebtedness, and providing funds for general municipal expenses, all for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2023, and declaring an emergency.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This item is to adopt an ordinance to set the primary and secondary property tax rate for fiscal year 2023. The primary property tax rate will be $0.3724 per $100 of assessed valuation, and the secondary property tax rate will be $1.2977 per $100 of assessed valuation. The total property tax rate will decrease from $1.7257, 1.6701 for fiscal year 23. That concludes my presentation.
Questions from the council? Can I get a motion on item 48, ordinance 022-48?
Mayor, motion to approve item number 48, ordinance number 022-48.
Second.
Motion from the Vice Mayor, second, from Councilmember Clark, approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion?
Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Melner.
Yes, I would just like to make a comment that this is the sixth year in a row...
Mayor, members of the council, it's the seventh year.
Seventh year, okay, seventh year, that we have reduced our tax rate. This year, the overall assessment rate is going 1.7257 per hundred assessment to 1.67. And so this has really been, I think, one of the highlights of us being able to control, you know, taxes for our residents is to minimize our property tax. And we've done that. Over the last six years, we've reduced property tax levies from the city of Glendale. And again, that doesn't mean necessarily that everybody's property tax goes down, because there are many other entities that also use the property tax. But when you look at your property tax bill, and you look at what the city of Glendale has assessed, you'll see the assessment rate has gone down each year. So I'm very grateful to this council for making that happen. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, you could explain your vote, too, so, just saying. Councilmember Clark, roll call vote, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, would you like to explain your vote?
No, I think I've done that, thank you.
Okay, how do you vote? Aye. Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries unanimous. Ms. Bauer, new business, item 49, would you please?
Approval of the fiscal year 2021 annual comprehensive financial report and annual audit.
Mayor, members of the council, regretfully, this is the last time we'll get a chance to call on Lizette Camacho, our Budget and Finance Director, to present here tonight.
Good evening again, Mayor, members of the council. This item is a new requirement per the state statute that requires city council to approve the audit of the financial statements. So this begins for the fiscal year 2021, audited financial statements. Also requires the auditor to present the results and any findings to the city council at a non-consent agenda item. So we do have Ms. Anne Fang here to present the results of the audit. She's with Clifton Larson Allen.
Do you have your presentation in your hand?
I do, so I can, I can go ahead, actually.
Why don't you just go ahead and do that? And if they can pull it up, great. If they can't, we'll just...
So, good evening, thank you for having me, Mayor and council members. I'm here to present the financial audit and the single audit results. Previously, we already presented financial audit results in the February workshop, and as Lizette mentioned, this is a new requirement, so we're coming back and presenting both the financial audit and the single audit results. So the city is required, oh, there it is. So the city is required to have an annual financial audit based on, not only because the city of Glendale requires it, but the continuing disclosure requirement by the bond issued by the city also requires it. The audit report is required to be submitted...
the bond issued by the city also requires it. The audit report is required to be submitted every year by February 1st. In addition, if the city spends more than $750,000 in federal grant money, a separate grant audit, which is called single, is also required. This year, the city actually spent around 34 million. So that's why we're issuing a separate single audit report. So just a quick overview on why, um, and how we come up with the audit procedures for these audits. Um, in order to, for us to issue or form an opinion on the city's financial statements, we needed to tailor and design the audit procedures based on our understanding of the city's operations and internal control procedures. And to obtain these understandings, we actually had talks with the city management, city personnel, and basically, uh, perform observations and walkthroughs on various transaction details. And these results help us in designing our audit procedures. And the result of our, of these audit procedures would become a basis for our opinions in the reports that we're issuing, which are notated in the next slide. So here are the reports that we issued for June 30, 2021. Uh, the governance communication letter, the annual comprehensive financial report, the single audit report, the annual expenditure limitation report, highway user revenue report, and the landfill assurance report. And I'll be going over quickly on what each report means in the next few slides. So the governance communication, it's basically a letter from the auditor to the council members. And it details basically the significant estimates that could be, any estimates for your investments, your capital assets, the allowance for doubtful accounts related to your accounts receivables, and any liabilities that are relating to your landfill closure, closure and post-closure insurance claims, payables, and your pension and OPAT liabilities. Uh, we also will communicate any difficulties or disagreements with the management, and I'm happy to report that there were none that happened during the audit, so that's a great thing. Uh, we did report one uncorrected misstatement, and that's because the amount is below the threshold that internally, internally determined by our firm. And there were one other, um, audit adjustments that we reported on the letter. So the next report we issue is the annual comprehensive, uh, financial report. And we issued the unmodified opinion, which is the highest assurance that we could issue as your external auditor. And that's basically a clean opinion. We also provide, um, other in relations to opinions on your combining and individual fund statements and schedules, and on your federal data schedule. This is the schedule that you submit to the Department of, um, Housing and Urban Renewal. Uh, I know that the annual comprehensive financial report received the GFOA Certificate of Excellence for 2020, and I am fully expect that the city will receive the same certificate for 2021. So the next one is single audit. And as I mentioned, um, the total federal, federal awards expanded for, for fiscal year 2021 is 34 million, just a little bit over 34 million. And based on our assessments, there were six major programs, the grant programs that we have reviewed and audited. They are the community development block grant, federal transit cluster, airport improvement grant, the coronavirus relief fund, emergency rental assistance, and the low-income home energy assistance. The reason why these six programs were selected is because they all contain a significant portion of coronavirus grant funding. And the federal government actually indicated that these funds are considered high-risk. And so if your program has a significant amount of these monies in it, they're automatically considered as high-risk and will be audited. And that's why they were six this year. And it is actually significant more than the previous years because, um, in, I was, in the previous years, they might be two or three major programs, but this year there were six. So the total federal award tested was about 19.4 million dollars, which is about 57% of coverage of your total federal expenditures. So on the uniform guidance report, we issued a modified, the clean opinion on the compliance and any internal control over your financial reporting. We did issue one material weakness, but that's considering with, um, the government auditing standard report, and that's over the financial statement side. It has nothing to do with your major programs. So the next three reports that I mentioned are the annual expenditure limitation report, the highway user revenue report. These ones are also issued with a clean opinion, the unmodified opinion. The landfill assurance report is a agree-upon procedures that we performed. Uh, we're happy to say there were also no findings or variance that were discovered based on the procedures. So this will actually conclude my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none, thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, I also wanted to clarify and make sure that council understands that the presentation is for fiscal year 2021. We're still working on the fiscal year 22 audit.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on item 49?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve item 49, approval of the fiscal year 2021 annual comprehensive financial report and audit.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff, for the recommended action. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries unanimous. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 50?
Approval of the fiscal year 2021, 22 Camelback Ranch Glendale Capital Repairs Replacement Program. Authorization for the city manager to expend funds to reimburse Camelback Spring Training LLC for capital repairs made at Camelback Ranch Glendale in fiscal year 2022, 23.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report this evening on our last agenda item is Michelle Retankel, Director of Field Operations.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor and council. This is the proposed annual plan for capital repairs and replacements at Camelback Ranch Spring Training Facility. It's in an amount not to exceed $1,464,049. Some of the projects we've got proposed as of tonight are one of the stadium, uh, amp and speaker replacement. That's approximately $250,000. Two field replacements for approximately $350,000. HVAC replacements for about $71,000. And resurfacing and striping the parking lot for about $50,000. These are some proposed projects, and I keep you, we're using the word proposed because they're under discussion, and there's others under discussion as well to ensure that they are the responsibility of the city to repair and replace. So tonight, we're asking for your approval to authorize the city manager to reimburse projects that are capital repairs and replacements as defined within the facility use agreement. Mayor, that concludes the presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I, I just want to make clear that we're still negotiating, and there may be other issues that we may deem are payable by the city. Is that correct?
Um, Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Clark, that, that is correct, but we have set the annual limit at the $1,464,000 that I read.
So if there are other items, they will come out of that allocation?
Mayor and councilmember, that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Hearing no other questions. Is there a motion on item 50?
Mayor, you've got a question.
I had a question.
I didn't hear you.
That's okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, in the staff report, it, it goes back several years, and, and I know this has been a sensitive issue for the council. Um, we were well below a million dollars in some of the earliest years that I was on council, and then it bumped up over a million dollars annually, um, almost double what it had been before. Um, so now we're, this will be the second year in a row where we're well over a million dollars. So in fiscal 21, 22, the year we're just now finishing, council at this time last year had approved a million 673,000 and change as a budget available. And as I recall, it was kind of the same presentation. Doesn't mean we're going to spend it all. How are we doing in this fiscal year, um, based on the, the million six we get, we authorized? Are, have we spent it all?
Uh, Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Turner, uh, we have a fair number of invoices that are currently under review. Uh, we have spent, including carryover, um, uh, just more than half of that. We've got about $900,000 right now that's left unspent, but we, like I said, there's still significant invoices that are under review today.
So I hate to put you on the spot because I didn't talk to you about this ahead of time, and obviously you don't have the invoices in front of you, and maybe they haven't all been delivered yet. But do you anticipate that we will have a significant savings in this fiscal year we're just now finishing over what we appropriated? Because that would make me feel better about the appropriation going forward.
Um, Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Turner, uh, we, even if all are approved and the cities, are the cities' responsibility and reimbursement, we will still have, uh, money that was not expended out of the current year's budget. Does, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, and very good. Thank you. I hope it's a big number. Six figures or higher. Um, and with that, then, Mayor, I have no other questions. And if there aren't any others, I'm ready to present the motion.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Motion?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that the council approve the fiscal year 2023 Camelback, uh, capital replacement, uh, program as recommended by staff.
Second.
Motion, Councilmember Turner, second, Councilmember Clark, for the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries unanimous. Okay, council comments and suggestions, starting with you, Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, three things. First, Lizette Camacho, congratulations on your new position. You will be sorely missed, but you'll join a buddy of ours, Tom Doncinc. And Tom is very highly regarded in the city. You couldn't be working for someone better than Tom Doncinc. So congratulations. Good luck to you in your new position. Secondly, we vacate in July. I'm sure staff is thrilled. No councilmembers around, no questions, no, hopefully, no phone calls, no texts. It'll be wonderful. Y'all be getting a vacation as well. Thirdly, reminder to the Yucca District residents that, uh, you have until June 30th to submit grant applications for the Beautify Yucca District Grant Program. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hughes?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember Melner?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I would just like to express the same sentiments with Ms. Camacho. Appreciate all your work in Glendale, and I'm sure you'll have a great, uh, s, a great career in Tempe. Um, also, just want to remind residents, Fourth of July weekend is coming up.
Talking.
Uh, and we want to be respectful of our neighbors and neighborhoods. You know, we know that, uh, you can let off fireworks, but only those kind of fireworks that don't go boom and don't go up in the air are not allowed. Those two types are not allowed. So, uh, allow you, the sparklers and cones and those kinds of things are allowable. And, um, be respectful of your neighbors and don't let off fireworks, uh, too late at night or, uh, in the early morning hours. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tomachoff?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, just briefly. Um, end of the fiscal year, uh, council, this will be our last meeting. We, uh, for anybody that's out of where, I'm pretty sure everybody in the room is, uh, we take a hiatus during the month of July, so we won't be back together till August. And, uh, though I may see some of you in the meantime, I will, won't see us all together, but, uh, I'll be thinking of you and want to speak out to the Glendale residents that heat is dangerous, you know, keep cool, stay hydrated. And especially in light of the events of this week in Glendale, please, everybody, watch your kids around water. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, if you'll bear with me, I've got a lot to say tonight. So first of all, this evening, I want to thank our citizens for the opportunity to serve you. I take great pride in being your representative, and I'm honored to serve as the vice mayor. Over the past 12 months, this council has been busy shaping your city, ensuring you have the services you come to expect at your front door, like water, sewer, trash collection, and transportation. During the past six months, this council has worked with our city manager and our staff to build a balanced budget that will continue to ensure public safety, such as our brave women and men of the Glendale Police Department, have the appropriate resources they depend on to protect you, me, and everyone, everyone else in this great city. Earlier this year, I, along with other members of this council, let Glendale Police know just how much we value their, their heroic services to their community. This message to the entire police force was, there will be no defunding of Glendale Police Department. And in fact, the 22, 23 budget reflects that commitment. We budgeted, this council budgeted approximately $158 million to public safety, or 61% of the total budget. Again, there is no defunding of PD. The 22, 23 budget also, also allows the department to hire four additional police officers. This year alone, Glendale PD, to date, has responded to 84,913 calls for service. Chief, that is an enormous amount of calls for service. And for that, thank you, all Glendale PD women and men. Our brave women and men of the Glendale Fire Department have been extremely busy answering calls for service in our community, and in fact, they answered a total of approximately 50,000 calls for services so far. Is why we budgeted for three additional firefighters for fiscal year 22, 23. Chief, thank you, and please share that with our firefighters. The brave women and men of the Glendale Fire Department often witness tragedy in our city, and I want you to know that it pains me to know that you have to witness such tragedies. I'm, however, extremely proud of your service and bravery. As fiscal year 21, 22 comes to an end, so does the career of our fire chief, Terry Garrison. Chief Garrison will officially retire on the last day of June 2022. Thank you, Chief, for your years of service to the city of Glendale, to our residents. I believe Chief Garrison has served for over 41 years to, to fire departments all over this country, including Glendale. Our employees, you are the backbone of this great organization, and without you, we could not sustain the rigorous efforts it takes to manage this city. Our employees remain our greatest asset in the, in this organization, and is why we've invested in retaining your great talent by allocating for a 5% COLA increase across the board for non-MOU employees and performance pay up to 2%. The council added approximately 59 additional employees in nine different departments across this organization. You remain our greatest asset, and I'm so very proud of all of our employees. So thank you, all of our council assistants, groundskeepers, facility workers, sanitation workers, water services, and street workers. All of you, you make me a better council member. To the Ocotillo District residents, I've been extremely busy representing you and advocating for improvements to our district, to name a few. In 21, 22, 37 miles of roads were paved and, and restripped in our district. Our city staff completed improvements to our right-of-ways in the Ocotillo District that have not been touched over 20 years. Our two community centers, Glendale Community Center and O'Neal Community Center, will undergo a significant remodel of the interior and exterior of the building, ensuring our youth have the facilities they can depend on and the resources they deserve. Downtown Glendale will have new cafe lighting over Glendale Avenue as part of the revitalization plan to improve downtown. The council also allocated in 22, 23 budget, a dedicated position in economic development that will manage resources and activities for downtown business owners as they so deserve. This position did, however, replace a contract with the Glendale Chamber of Commerce, Commerce, that previously managed these activities. And I would like to thank Robert Hite and the Chamber for their efforts in downtown. Downtown, in my opinion, is a better place because of relationships with the Chamber. The Ocotillo, the Ocotillo District will be home to the new Mountain Park Health, Health Center located at 69th Avenue and Glendale Avenue, and is currently under construction and expected to be completed in 2023. There is so much more to share with you, the Ocotillo District residents, is why I ask you to watch for your, my second district update in July 2022 in your mailbox, to include projects and improvements you can expect to be completed next year, and some that have already been completed. And I want to take this opportunity to thank Janet Idago, my assistant, who has worked diligently to make these projects and all these other things happen in the district, and my office function much better. But I want to thank you, the citizens, and thank you for the opportunity to serve. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, and for myself, a few announcements. All right. And for myself, a few announcements. Maricopa Association of Governments, also known as MEG, manages a half-cent sales tax dedicated to building and maintaining freeways, as well as funding arterial street improvements and regional transit network. This tax has actually been in existence since back in the 1980s and currently has an expiration date of December 31 of 2025. For the last four years, MEG member agencies, including our city of Glyndale, have sought legislative authority to hold a county election to extend the tax. During the four-year time, I chaired Maricopa Association of Government Transportation Policy Committee, which created the framework for how the tax continuation will be spent throughout the entire Maricopa County. I also chaired MEG Regional Council during the final year of negotiating the 25-year tax extension. As part of my responsibilities as the chair and now former chair of MEG, I joined members of the business community lobbyists to advocate on, on and to the legislature to grant Maricopa County the authority to hold an election to continue this transportation tax. After years, and I'm telling you, years of really hard work, I'm thrilled to share that the last, that just last week, the Arizona Legislature authorized an election. While there are many reasons to celebrate the authority granted by the legislature, we still have to and need to convince our residents the merits of this transportation tax and, and make sure that they go to the ballot in March and vote. So I'd like to thank MEG staff for their hard work, the council for their support. And then I'd like to point out one of our own, Ryan Lee. Ryan and myself have made countless trips down to the legislature for countless meetings, and Ryan has just been really outstanding. So I'm really, really proud that we have Ryan in the position that he's in. He's done an awesome job, and so I just want to make sure that Ryan gets kudos for that. So with that said, we'll move on to our citizens' comments. Next on the agenda is just that, council makes the opportunity available to citizens to bring information and business before this council that's not on the, included in the printed agenda. So with that said, I have two speakers. We're going to bring Margaret Sanger up first. Margaret, where you at? Or is it Marget? I don't know. I'll let you say your name. How's that?
You got it correct.
I don't need your address. I just need to know the district that you live in, and then you have three minutes.
I'm not sure which district, but it's 5959 Greenway Road.
Okay.
Okay.
State your name, sir.
Ma'am. Hi, my name is Margaret Sanger. Yes, I am named after the abortionist, the eugenicist, and the founder of Planned Parenthood. My two mothers named me after Margaret Sanger. We are devoted to the LGBTQIP2SAA+ revolution. Initially, I came here to talk about the tremendous progress us Democrats have made in pushing cultural Marxism in the LGBTQIP2SAA+ doctrine into society, culture, and in the educational system. As you may know, Superintendent for Public Instruction Kathy Hoffman has made tremendous progress in, in pushing the doctrine into the public education system. As you may know, on the official Arizona Department of Education website features LGBT resources for minors. My favorite resource is the two chat rooms on the website where a minor could talk to an adult volunteer or a LGBT acolyte about their sex life, their gender identity, and their gender expression. But I'm no longer here to talk about that today because my therapist recently diagnosed me with Stockholm Syndrome and said that I should come up here and speak. As you may know, Roe v. Wade was overturned, and the Democrats have betrayed us. I cannot believe they betrayed us. They are saying that abortion is strictly for women only. But as you may know, there are over 55 different genders. Men can get pregnant. Men can give birth. Men can menstruate. Females can impregnate. So I don't know why they're saying this. It's almost like they're, they're using this cause for social engineering expediency or for political votes. I don't know why they're doing this. To circle back to the abortion, my wife's, Jenner Mills' boyfriend is nine months pregnant and cannot terminate his nine-month clumps of cells. So fortunately, we found a clinic in Guadalajara, Mexico. So he is taking our nine-month clump of cells down to Guadalajara, Mexico, and his adopted 15-year-old Ethiopian son to undergo a sex change operation. Due to the bigotry here in Arizona, like Senate Bill, I can't remember, 1138 in 84, I believe, passed by Governor Ducey, which you may know that incumbent Superintendent for Public Instruction Kathy Hoffman has bravely said that it is a bigoted government overreach to transition a child under the age of 18 and for a child, a teenager or maybe an adult, trans woman or man cannot compete in, in a male, a cis male or cis female sport.
Your time's up, sir.
Happy Pride Month.
Thank you.
Happy Pride Month.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I am Yvonne Knack. I currently reside in Phoenix, but I have worked or have been a property owner in downtown Glyndale for over 52 years. I am Chair of the Downtown Strategic Leadership Group, and I am a former vice mayor of the City of Glyndale. I'm just going to read my email because I want to make sure, because only three of you responded to my email I sent on June 13th. So I want to make sure you all get it. Since the council workshop in February and the presentation of the plans for the remodel of City Hall, there has been many questions asked by the businesses, residents, and property owners in the downtown area and the rest of Glyndale. Some answers have been given on the participation of the community in having meetings and communication of the design of City Hall and the amphitheater. There is an exception, expectation that the community will have input in how the area is transformed. Everyone is behind an infusion of investment in downtown and the prospect of filling vacancies and stimulating the economic possibilities. The end goal is to make cash registers ring. However, the culture of downtown should be enhanced and not replaced. We have an iconic downtown that is known statewide, and Murphy Park is a centerpiece. To replace the beautiful trees that have been there to shade the park and bring people there to celebrate many events is unimaginable. The conceptual drawings show a plaza, not a park. We have discovered that the park has not been irrigated for a couple of years and maybe longer. The irrigation schedules for 2021 and 2022 do not show Murphy Park on the schedule. In January of 2020, City of Glyndale Parks requested CDBG funds to repair the Murphy Park irrigation system. CDAC recommended funding to the council, and council approved the grant. Those funds were later reallocated back because those repairs were never made. The 2021-2022 Substantial Annual Action Plan Amendment shows the reallocation of $172,345 originally awarded to the city for Murphy Park irrigation repairs. They also reallocated the ADA improvement funds. Why was this done? It was commented that the money wasn't needed because the park was going to be for escape. This has apparently been the plan for several years, unbeknownst to anyone outside City Hall. The trees there only become diseased by not watering them, and there are now trees that are in that state due to lack of deep watering. I have had conversations with a multitude of people from Oliver, Glyndale, and beyond. No one thinks transforming Murphy Park into a concrete plaza is the change that will bring people to downtown.
All right. Can you wrap it up?
I just respectfully ask Mayor and council to save Murphy Park. Thank you very much.
There being no further business before this council tonight, I'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight's meeting. No objection from the council? Thank you.